Welcome.
Welcome, everyone. We will kick off the school committee meeting with a roll call. Tim Knight is here.
Michelle Kirkby here.
Leo Brem here.
Will Horn here.
Diana Fraschella here.
Okay, thank you. And we'll kick it off with public input. Members of the public will be welcome to comment during public input, either here in the room or on Zoom. Raise your Zoom hand. And we ask that you put your camera on. And whether you're on Zoom or in the room, we'd ask that you state your name, your address, and we ask that you speak for no more than three minutes and only on topics under the purview of this school committee. So is there any public input here in the room? Come on up.
Hi, yeah. I'm Francesca Hardeman. I am the parent of a couple of hockey players at the high school. And I'm here to just, it's going to be on the agenda later on, about the hockey fees being increased for the program at the high school. And I'm in support of that. I think that right now, we pay about $300 per player at the high school. If we increase that a little bit to 400 or 450, we'll cover all JV ice time and varsity ice time for both practices and games. And that will kind of separate the budgets between parents raising money outside of the registration fees. That can sort of be saved for banquets and merchandise or senior night. And that aligns with all of the other sports. Hockey is a little bit different where we have to pay ice rink fees, which are super expensive, and we're all used to doing that. Most of us have been paying over $1,000, up to like $4,000 when your kids are in club hockey programs in middle school and high school. So I am glad that you guys led it on the agenda today. I'm in support of that. I was a captain parent this past '23-'24 season. And all of those captain parents, there were eight of us, were in support of it. And the incoming captains, their parents, I've talked to six out of the eight, and they're also in support of that. So I just wanted to kind of get up here and say that. And I think that was it. Oh, the other thing I think that's important is when we raise the money after the registration fees, we're asking families to voluntarily contribute money. It's a little more uncomfortable to say like, "I can't contribute." So no one does that. When you put into the registration fees, you can have hardship costs covered by the district. If somebody approaches the athletic director and says, you know, "I can't make the 300 or 250 or 450 if we increase it," it'll be covered by the school. So thank you for listening. Thank you.
There's no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay. We're going to try to just shift the agenda around a little bit. One actually, the athletic fees were later on the agenda. We'd like to move that forward just because there's a game that I think Eric would be helpful if he's out there as well. So we're going to run that first, then we're going to do the retirees. Then we're going to do the Jim James Award, which is, I think, a lot of the, between retirees and the Jim James crowd here is for. So we'll cover those first. Everybody at that point is welcome to stay for consent agenda and everything else. But at least get through this where a lot of the folks are. So Eric, are you going to come on up?
So Eric's going to present some of the findings that he has in terms of the TBL and some of the other fees that are associated. Just as a reminder, we have not changed the fee since 2017 here. And prior to that, it was, Eric and I were talking about probably decades. It would stay the same forever. So we made some adjustments and did three-tier fees in 2017, but we think based on the increase, that increases some of the fees, so.
I have nothing else, so. They did a great job covering pretty much everything I was going to say. So in your package, you do have a list of all the TBL and surrounding schools.
They didn't get that.
Okay. In the, so I have a list I can share with you after the fact of we did in our, in the last two years, Mr. Lafrancheja and I, we kind of, we've been taking a look at all the area schools, kind of where they're at for athletic fees, especially for hockey, just because costs are going up and everything, and especially with ice time and other fees associated with that. And looking, looking toward, you know, getting closer to, you know, funding that program. Nothing's going to be level funded, but right now, we're just losing a lot of money, especially with hockey. And we're trying to close that, close that gap. So the proposal we had is our current fees are $300, and we're looking to increase that fee for boys and girls hockey to 450, which still puts us well in line with all the area schools. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
What are the other sports that will have an increase?
They're welcome.
Swimming, golf are not going to be raised?
Yeah, so 50 out of our 52 teams will not have an increase.
And those, those other teams, like for instance golf, when they dive, they, skiing, they were in that third tier last time, right?
Yep. In 2017, we kind of changed the entire process, working with the school committee at that point. We went from just two fees to actually a three-tier fee. So the first tier is, you know, middle school, all middle school sports and running sports. So your track and field, your cross countries and all middle school sports are $225 per participant. And then the second tier is almost everything else would be 250 for your lacrosse, your soccers, you know, basketballs, et cetera. And then you're anything that requires a facility rental. And those are going to be, like Dr. Marsen said, you know, golf, gymnastics, swimming and diving. To this point, ice hockey are all going to be that third tier, that 300. And for most of those, it covers ice hockey. We're still dealing with a huge deficit.
So we'd really be looking at creating a fourth tier, and hockey would kind of be in its own fourth tier?
Exactly. An addendum to our 2017 vote, yes.
Okay.
Nice. And I think our plan is to listen to it tonight. We wouldn't be voting on it.
Absolutely, that's what I understand.
That's the plan. I would just, as I, as you think about it, I would just think about, you know, what are the tier, what might cause a third or fourth sport to cross into that tier, right? Like, and I imagine you or Michael have done that.
Yeah.
Percentage of revenue or percentages of, you know, expense.
Exactly, like, I mean, first.
You just want to be consistent, you'd want to be, you know, think about it in order to.
I think what we did in 2017, which we'll do prior to you guys having to vote on that, is, is Michael did all the projections on that to see what the, what the revenue would be coming in and the differences of the increased cost over the next, you know, X amount of years. So I think we'll give that to you either at the next meeting in June or at the August meeting, so you can take a look at it and get more information. We want to get it on the agenda tonight just to kind of put it out there and kind of get your feedback on it. But we know that there's much more work to be done and you need much more information before you actually formalize your vote.
Absolutely, we have a lot, real numbers from the past two years, so we're not just talking theoreticals. We can definitely get you that information as well.
Are there avenues for families that maybe can't afford that to get supplemented?
Absolutely. And I think Ms. Hardeman actually spoke to that. We're never going to preclude anyone from athletics due to financial constraints. That's just our district's policy, that's my policy. So we'll find a way. So if anybody, you know, my previous district, they had to be free or reduced. We actually asked for tax forms. Thankfully, we don't do that here. If someone emails me with a need, either if it's set up a payment plan or a partial payment or a full waiver for that fee, we always make it happen. So I'm very proud of that. Thank you.
What's the number of students between the two, the men's and women's?
For hockey?
Yeah.
This, this season, we had 21 girls hockey players, and I believe we had 39 boys between the JV and the varsity.
Okay.
And that number fluctuates a little bit, but usually right around that.
And we still, you know, how much it costs.
Yeah, one of our ranks in particular, when we passed this in 2017, was $225 an hour. It's now $410 an hour.
Yeah.
In seven years. That's crazy.
It's warmer outside. Keep cold.
Yes.
So we'll come back and.
Yep.
Yeah, no, that's worthwhile.
Yep. Feel free to reach out to me directly, or I can, you know, put something together with Mr. Lafrancheja for all of you. And of course, you know, it was always, always a pleasure to be here. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yeah, I think that would be good. So next, we're actually going to switch it just one other way. We're going to do the Jim James Award recipient. And I'm not sure who's driving that.
Hello. Co-presidents of CPAC, and thank you for having us here this evening.
And again, Claire, we're going to stay with the Jim James here, and then we'll talk on the other CPAC topic.
Yes, we got it. So what we're going to do is we're going to read the description. We'll have people come up and get their certificates. We'll ask them to stand here. We're going to do a group photo.
Right.
Any of you are welcome to join that group photo. And Jim James is here as well, and he'll join us.
Do you want to describe what it is?
Yeah, we're going to. Jim, the Jim James Inclusion Award, sponsored by the Medfield Special Education Parents Advisory Council, seeks to highlight the employees within our district to promote and model inclusive practices, ensuring that all learners are welcomed and celebrated. Jim James, a former educator and owner of Park Street Books, embodies what it means to be the champion of inclusivity. The Park Street Books consistently looks for ways to support the entire community, including inclusive employment practices and increasing accessibility to books. Jim and his team work with local communities to give employment opportunities and experience to people with special needs. In addition, they have donated about a million books to schools and hospitals in need.
So the Medfield CPAC Special Education Parent Advisory Council would like to honor the following Medfield Public Schools faculty and staff members who, like Jim James, make outstanding efforts on behalf of the students with special educational needs to promote and model inclusion. We are going to read the following names, and they will come up and receive their awards. So the first one we have is Caitlin Fahey, Food Service Director. Next, we have Eric Ormberg, Medfield High School Guidance Counselor and Football Coach. Jamie Ty, Medfield High School Behavior Technician. Jason Heim, Blake, a teacher at Blake Middle School. Hunter Stewart, Medfield High School Special Ed Teacher. Kimberly Breton, Medfield High School Behavior Technician. Liz Bennett, Medfield High School Nurse. Melissa Newton, Memorial School Teacher. Michael Kramer, Medfield High School Math Teacher and Track Coach. Susan Baikoff, Blake Teacher, Teacher at Blake Middle School. Kimberly Kristoff, Memorial School Teacher. Russ Becker, Medfield High School Adjustment Counselor. Sheena Lamb, Wheelock Preschool Teacher. Stacy Burns, Blake Adjustments Counselor. Tricia Foley, Memorial and Blake Art Teacher. So Trish is not here. Plus, we have two other honorees that were not able to make it tonight. Molly O'Sullivan, Wheelock Special Ed Teacher, and Zachary Barrows, Medfield High School Teacher. Thank you. We're going to do the group photo. Thanks so much.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Thank you. No, just, I know it's the first time you've done it, and I know that we all appreciate it so much. And I know Jim's here somewhere, too.
He is.
He's hiding up in the back.
Couldn't think of a better person to name it after. I just really appreciate all your effort and so proud of everybody that got the awards. Sure, I'll take one, actually.
You guys want to?
I want to tell you. It's the Jim James Inclusion Award.
Thank you for your support. Thank you, everyone.
What's that?
I know, it's going to be cut to everybody back. Oh, for them? Yeah. They're probably wrong. Yeah, they're retiring.
Okay, so for the retirees, it's just you and me will be in the picture.
Right.
Right. Okay. So, thank you. So then we're going to next talk to our 2024 retirees, and Jeff's going to walk us through that.
So this is always, as you know, a bittersweet evening where we honor our retirees for their great service to our kids. We're sad that they're leaving, but we're happy for the next chapter in their lives. And I would just ask that when I call your name, please come on up, and then we'll do a picture at the end that Tim and I will actually be in that picture. We'll, we'll do that. So we do that each year. So first is Nancy DeRoche. Nancy here?
There you are.
So, well, yeah. So Nancy has been a fixture in our cafeteria for 30 years. And the one thing that I will always remember about Nancy, it is always service with a smile. So congratulations, Nancy, for 30 years of dedicated service to the children and community of the Medfield Public Schools with deep appreciation of the Medfield School Committee, June 2024. So our next recipient, Nancy McLaughlin. We're doing Nancy and Nancy. You know, Nancy, when we think of Nancy, to me, she embodies our core value of continuous growth, always working to improve herself. At her retirement get-together, Nat Vaughn actually admitted that a lot of the articles that he sends out come from Nancy. So I thought that was, that was, that was pretty telling. So congratulations to Nancy for 15 years of dedicated service to the children of the community of Medfield Public Schools with deep appreciation of the Medfield School Committee, June 2024. Come on up, Nancy. Herb Grace. Mr. Grace has been here 32 years, is a teacher 35 years as a coach. I think everyone recognizes that booming voice, whether you're walking into the memorial gym or the high school gym during basketball season. Herb is a member of the Hall of Excellence at Medfield High School. He and his wife Paula recognized a few years ago and also recently inducted into the High School Basketball Coach Hall of Fame for Massachusetts. So Herb Grace, for 32 years of dedicated service to the children of the Medfield community and the Medfield Public Schools with deep appreciation, Medfield School Committee, June 2024. Would you do a quick photo?
Sure.
All right. All right.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, actually, why don't, we'll even do the end-of-year updates, and then we'll do the consent agenda.
Sure.
So the end-of-year updates, it's, and I think we have, we have folks from CPAC. We have our, are we doing, let me just make sure I did this correctly. Are the site councils, are we doing that first, or are we doing that?
I think CPAC first, then Site Councils.
Okay, so we're just gonna go right under this sequence.
Yeah.
Okay, so just over, so why don't we start with Melissa and Catherine again from CPAC?
This is the most public speaking we've done in years.
I know. And it's our favorite.
All right, well, thanks again for having us.
Yeah.
Thanks for your support of the Jim James Award. The feedback from our families and staff and from the teachers has been, we've been doing a lot of weeping. It's just been very emotional, and you can see the impact that it being recognized means. Anyway, overall, this is a great year for the Medfield CPAC Special Education Parent Advisory Council, which we will now call CPAC Board. We increased our communications and visibility within the community by attending PIN nights. We increased communications in the school weekly news blasts and our social media accounts. This led to a 79% increase in our email distribution list. Just so people know, we don't know who's on an IEP or 504. They have to self-select to hear from us. So this was a big increase here for us. We had a 55% increase on Instagram and a 47% increase on Facebook Audiences. We also launched our first newsletter, which will be distributed three times a year. So we have one coming up in the next couple of weeks. In response to parent feedback, we added five parent connection groups focused on diagnosis. So ADHD, ASD, anxiety and depression, Down Syndrome, dyslexia, and language-based learning disabilities, allowing parents to connect with and support other parents. With 50 participants, we expanded this program to add two additional parent connection groups focused on allergy, intellectual and developmental disabilities, which hopefully launch this summer.
We continue to work with the district by having educational team leaders join parents. We had Meredith Becker, which is our Medfield High School Transitions and Outplacement Coordinator, and Stephanie Worley from the Guidance, she's the Guidance Department Chair, Lead a High School Transition Presentations. And we had Educational Team Leader Mary Salamone and Mary Bruhl as active participants in all of our meetings, which allows us to have continuous great exchange and feedback of ideas. We saw a significant increase in meeting attendance. Our largest RSVP count was 60 people for the executive functioning presentation. Other meetings range from 10 to 30 RSVPs. We did cancel two presentations due to lack of RSVPs. We'd like to thank you, all of you, for inviting CPAC to the school committee and the school group network, the communications and superintendent meetings. We really appreciate it. And this year, as you all know, we launched the Jim James Inclusion Award, and we had 20 nominations. So we had a couple of our nominees receive several recommendations from families. And the themes of inclusion and impact on students and their families were truly powerful, as Melissa said. And Tricia Foley created an adaptive art program, and we're hoping to see that could get expanded throughout our schools. She did a great job with that.
If you'd like to see, if you'd like to see the nominations, they are available on our website under our year-end report, and they were also submitted to the school committee ahead of time, so that they could read them. So as always, we strive to support families in our community that need help navigating educational services for their child, whether they have an IEP, 504, or not. We are excited about the year ahead. We have an outstanding group of parent volunteers. We are very close to having a full board with some backup members. And we have some really great ideas for workshops and partnerships. We've been really, really impressed with the number of people, like the PTO, Medfield Outreach, who have come forward to want to partner with us to provide educational workshops and support. Yeah, and anything we can do to foster connection and support within the Medfield community. Do you have any questions?
No, but I just wanna say thank you, because I feel like you guys did an amazing amount of work this year, and it's the positive good that you've been able to just bring in making these connections. And I guess not meeting people where they're at, and like actively going out and making sure that everybody can be included. I just wanna say that I really appreciate it, and you guys have done an amazing job.
Thank you.
Very grateful for everything you've done.
I was gonna echo that, but no, I wanna just, what, what else? How else can we help? You know, I think we tried to put, I think it was, I was happy we had a couple of members attending more frequently.
That's huge.
It's a huge area of what we are trying to drive that, you know, connected tissue between all these groups who are here today. I put in an email to you folks this morning, and I believe it. I mean, you guys really do, you're building the model for us. I look at this, and I'm like, this is what we're trying to do. How are they doing that so effectively? We see it, and we appreciate it. It obviously makes a huge difference. But I, you know, and I do think that, when I read through your statements or your review, I was blown away.
Yeah.
78% increase, however you did it.
And I'd like to add, that's really all on Melissa. She really put a great brand and put Medfield out there for the world to see. And that's huge, and that made a huge difference. I mean, we're Instagram, first time ever. Facebook group is strong, and that's really all on Melissa's hard work.
It's just about, you know, repeating your message.
Yeah, so is there any, I mean, that was the only, and we'll ask that from the other groups as well. Any other, anything else you wanna share or anything?
I think it's still, it's just like looking for opportunities to invite our parents to the table. So when you're looking at professional development, you know, if there's a focus on inclusion, like how can you leverage some of the parents and their experience, right, to help make that more robust and also makes parents feel heard? You know, and just continuing to include us in communications and opportunities.
Yep.
Yeah, no, we will. We, a little bit more effort on our part, and we get a great return, just seeing it. But there was a lot of, a lot more visibility we saw during the year. So I, you know, I echo what Michelle said, thank you so much. And it's great to hear.
And there's a great, great new board coming through.
Co-presidents are back there.
We've got two fabulous ladies over there, and they are gonna do great things.
They really are.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's great, thank you.
Thank you for your leadership, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, and then the Site Councils, are we doing, do you wanna do each school? Okay, good, so why don't we start with the high school? Karen, Robert and Karen?
Good evening, everybody. Robert Parker, the principal here at the high school. I'm here with Karen Schaefer, who's one of our teachers. I'll talk a little bit more about Karen in a minute. First, I wanna thank our Site Council for all their work this year. We had two students on our Site Council, Christian Roth, the senior, who I think you met in the fall. We had him presenting Junior Catherine Tallahan's also on our Site Council, as well as a few teachers' parents, so it's been a good group to work with. Our discussions this year focus on topics such as the budget, program of studies, our school schedule, the college application process for our seniors. We talked about school start times and the parent-teacher conferences that we held at the secondary level. As you know, those conferences were held at the secondary level for the first time. So joining me tonight is Karen Schaefer, who is our business teacher here at Medfield High School. Karen is also one of our members of Site Council. She was able to bring a very unique perspective to our fall meeting, where we followed up after our parent conferences to get some feedback and try to get a sense of what we want to do with the spring. And her unique role that she plays is, not only is Karen a teacher here, but two of her children attend Medfield High School as well. So she was able to participate in the conferences both as a teacher and a parent. So her insight was very helpful. So Karen's gonna talk a little bit about what that was from her perspective.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Parker. First of all, I wanna say thank you so much to the school committee. You put so many hours into giving our children and the entire community the education that every parent is hoping for. And to CPAC for taking care of our kids that are maybe a little neuro-different, right, and need all the help and assistance they can get. So first, I'll talk about parent-teacher conferences from a teacher's perspective, and they were wonderful. It gives us the opportunity to sit down with any parent who wants to talk about their child in greater detail. And even though I think we do a nice job connecting with the home front, when you sit down with the parent and you find out what's going on at home, some of the mantras that the parents use with the children, what their special interests are. And sometimes it helps just to hear the context of that particular child. Like, a parent might share something like, there's a student in this class that they used to be best friends with two years ago, but they don't talk to anymore. So if you can kind of help keep them closer or move them more apart, you know, all those helps with making it a safe learning environment for the student. So we've heard a lot about careers that students are interested in, how students are oftentimes afraid to go to the next level. They're afraid to go to honors, but their teachers think they can, their parents think they can. So it gives us a chance to help with that. The social-emotional connection between classroom and home is so strengthened. So that's been wonderful. From a parent's perspective, really helpful to find out, and it's kind of like reversing it, right? So the first thing a lot of parents do when they come in and they sit down and they say, is my child well-mannered in class? Because at home, they can be a terror sometimes, right? But as a parent, I get to have the same conversation. Does my kid's hoodie stay up? Does it come down? Do they talk too much? Do they talk not enough? Are they using work session time proactively? Or are they goofing off and distracted and trying to do other things? The connections with the teachers have been really helpful, because that's when you realize, even if everything is going smoothly for your child, you find out which teacher or which subject has a real connection and really cares about your child. And when your kid has a tough day, that's what you can go to. And you can say like, what did Mrs. Baikoff say, or, you know, whatever. So you can, you can relate it to somebody, right? So it's really helpful to find out if they're doing the work. And I think it helps the teachers hear the parents' perspective of, this year, we're just trying to make sure there's no zeros in the gradebook. You've gotta do the work, right? So if you find that my child is trying to allow there to be zeros in their gradebook, that's not acceptable at home, and we're trying to manage that, right? So parenting is absolutely about relationships, and having a stronger relationship with the teacher's been really valuable to Jeff, my husband, and I, too. Oh, so when we sit down with students, each parent or each teacher does it a little bit differently based on your class and the grade of the student. But as an example, I can tell them what their grades are, some recent projects they've been working on, who are their teammates. We have classroom pictures, so I can say, these are the students that your child works with a lot. Here's where they sit in the classroom. Here are their strengths. Growth is, of course, talking about the areas where they have gaps, and they don't manage themselves well. And we spend a lot of time talking about the parents' insights. What are their interests? What gets them excited? What are you hoping that they'll develop or learn in the class, too? So, well worth it. Any questions about parent-teacher conferences at the high school?
That's the format for each?
Everybody does it a little bit differently. So I've got like a one-page, and then I can hand it to them. If they're via Zoom, I can show it to them and offer to mail it to them. So like Mrs. Blue in bio, she has maybe like two pages and a ton of details. Like, here are the different projects, here's how they're scoring, this is what I'm thinking. I go with this, but I think every teacher in the high school has some format that they can hand to the parent, and it gives you a nice discussion point. So when Jeff came home from his parent conferences, he had notes on how the, how the kids were doing in each of their classes, too.
One of the changes we made for our second round of conferences was we sort of closed the window for parents to sign up a little earlier to allow teachers more time to prepare some of what they want to share with families. So our first time into it, I think we closed like on a Friday, and then we were starting right back that Monday with conferences. And some of the feedback we're getting from teachers is, oh, we wish we had a little bit more time. I knew exactly who was coming, so I can better prepare. So second time around, departments came up with different forms that they wanted to use, and we gave them about a week from the time the signups closed, so that they could prepare some of those for families, which the feedback on that was pretty positive as well.
Yeah, just look at that. Why would you not want to sign your, why wouldn't you want to come? Because it gives you a little more, you're thinking about the child a little more.
And also worth noting, on the, I don't know if I mentioned before with conferences, we gave families both the opportunity for an in-person conference.
Yeah.
More families still, it was still more in-person, but families did have the opportunity to zoom in if that worked better for them as well.
I don't have a question, but I didn't get to compliment Melissa and CPAC. If you guys did, but jump on that. But I want, this is, I think this is unbelievable that we do this, and I think it is so awesome. And all the, I don't have a middle school or high school kid yet, but all the feedback I got was unbelievable. And as a teacher and a parent, a lot of times that first introduction is like, hey, Jimmy's goofing off in class, or it's from the parent, like, why does Jimmy have a B+ when he deserves As? So to bridge that gap early is like so good for everything, and so good for these kids. And hearing like everything you just said, Rob, that you guys changed between the first and second conference, I just need to like name, because I get to sit here, like, how unbelievable it is that you guys are doing so good for our kids, and I appreciate it. And everyone does.
Thanks, Paul. Yeah, that's, that's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. So Susan and Nat, and Blake?
Considering what Herb said, I thought I'd see a sea of green.
I tried.
Susan's gonna talk, I'll talk to everyone, kind of, here for a minute.
I like the fact that you're both going green.
I do, too.
They're turning up green, I know. Yeah, I know.
So I just wanna, you know, similar with Robert as the chair, too. I really enjoy our Site Council being a great deal.
It's a real formal way that we are obligated to, but to really partner with our families. We do not have students come in, but we try to represent student voice at the middle school. And we also, Susan will talk more about it, but we're also very fortunate that some of our Site Council members, who are now community members, have still stayed on, which is really nice perspective, too, to talk about. Because, you know, as we know, parenting middle schoolers is not for the faint of heart. So it's a big opportunity for that. And I just wanna shout out and thank Susan and all of the teachers who give a lot of their time. It's not paid, it's not extra to be on Site Council, and we lean on them heavily, which is wonderful.
It's paid in other ways.
All right, fair enough. Well said, so, thanks, Susan.
All right, so.
Thank you very much. I do wanna just make the statement that when we're all here, because we're trying to meet the needs of all students, like the capital "all", so important to recognize that, and so important to recognize Site Council. It is, we are obliged to have it, but it bridges this moment between the parent, the caregiver, and the school, and it's such a wonderful opportunity. Also, thank you to our district for supporting this, because we get to focus on what we do best, which is educating our students. So Blake has some school-wide goals that we have, and they align to the strategic plan. One is surrounding curriculum, one is surrounding professional growth, and one is surrounding reflection and feedback. And so what we spend our time at Site Council doing is we talk under those umbrella of those three goals. So one of the things we've done is we've talked about conferences, similar to what the high school did. It was the first time having it, have them twice this year, has been excellent. We are so fortunate at Blake, we have the cluster model. So we do have other avenues, you know how we love the cluster model at Blake. We do have other avenues with which to speak with parents, but adding the conferences has been a major, major supportive process for our students. We also, as educators, are constantly working on our professional growth, which is one of our goals. And we try to lean on science and learn about the brain and how students learn, and what's best for social-emotional learning and for our curriculum. And so this, we talk a lot about the parents that come there to educate them on that. We've also spent time looking at our schedule, and we know that that is in the works to change and to make our school day a little bit more appropriate for our students to learn. At this point, I do wanna give a shout-out, it is open to the public. So if anybody wants to come, and we were really lucky. We've had a lot of parents who have come, who have come for multiple years. I've been on Site Council for multiple years. And we had Melissa.
years, and we had Melissa, I don't know if she's still here, we had CPAC come and represent. So I kind of feel like one of those sitcoms where it's the crossover, we have all these people showing up, it's been wonderful. And any parent at any time does not have to RSVP, they can just come. At Blake, we love having parents with us. And also, we looked, last time, we talked about unique experiences that we can bring to our students to supplement kind of the day-to-day curriculum that we go through, some of our field trips, I mean, on Monday, we'll be biking down a path in Medfield, we'll be doing that. And we talked about different ways that we can provide scholarships for students, how we can get everybody included, how we can alter the bike trip to make it accessible to all our students. And then we do look at the nitty-gritty of the day-to-day work of the teachers, of the curriculum, the instruction, the planning, the assessment. We are working on calibrating our instructional practices, we look at things like homework, we survey a lot, and we try to take the information that we find out, and we talk at our faculty meeting, but we also then bring it back to site council. So it is a great time to be had by all, and I welcome anybody to come, and that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
No, 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 I mean, I thank you, because this is, we talked about it a few years ago, like, it was even when you were running, but moving site council from a kind of a checkbox and a thing you have to do, to something that starts to bring everyone together. And it jumps off the page, just listening to you. So that, the way you're promoting that and saying, we want to bring the parents in.
Yeah, it's essential, it's essential.
That's a great sounding tool and a lot of words, too.
We're thinking about to really get, and it's nice, because it's not about one child, it's about, let's get some objective lenses, and we kind of talk a lot about like norms and principles, we're not going to talk about your child, per se, but let's really think about broadly, what would families be thinking about this, how would we approach it? And it's a nice way to kind of peel across the curtain about what's going on in the school, and to kind of explain more about what's going on, so.
Yeah, no, so, no, thank you, thank you so much. And it is nice, even, we've watched, I mean, I'm glad that you're the one doing most of the speaking, nothing against Nat, or Robert, or Steven, or others. But that's, I think, part of what we are trying to do, is hear from that, so, no, thank you.
Also want to recognize Susan for being one of our unified basketball coaches.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Wow. I've seen people say, yes, those games will be returning next fall, so.
Just a wonderful new program that I know you folks support, so, sport ball, as you call it.
Sport ball, and let me tell you, the bench is wide and vast, so if anybody wants to join us, come on down, we'll have merch next year.
There will be a proposal coming for a Bashi team this fall.
Can't wait.
Get your Medfield blue ready.
Thank you, thanks.
So Dale, which is, Emily. Oh, sure, however you guys want to do it, yeah, sure. So Dale, Wheelock, and Memorial.
Well, members of the school committee, Dr. Morrison, thank you for having us here tonight. We are happy to come as an elementary group, Holly unfortunately couldn't be here because of prior engagement she had. But I just want to report out that the three elementary schools have shown wonderful progress in aligning their school improvement plans with Medfield's new strategic plan, underlying collective dedication towards the well-being of our students and staff, and promoting the higher standards of teaching and learning. Through collaboration, innovative strategies, and a shared vision, the Memorial, Wheelock, and Dale Street School councils have successfully incorporated district-wide goals into our school improvement plans, ensuring a cohesive and consistent approach to enhancing student learning overall at the elementary schools. Furthermore, the members of the site council, who you'll hear about later, have been invaluable advisors, as they help us particularly in the planning of our school budgets. The three councils have been proactive in their engagement and dedication, not only to foster a more supportive environment for our students and staff, but also, I think you'll hear, they highlight the power of collaboration. The positive impact of these efforts is already evident in our four priorities, setting the strong foundation for continuous growth and consistency across the Medfield elementary schools. So on behalf of Missy, Holly, and myself, and the members of the site council, thank you all for your continued support, and Dr. Morrison as well. At this time, I would like to invite up Ms. Joan Dion, who is a member of the Wheelock Site Council, and also a second-grade teacher at Wheelock.
Thank you, Ms. Dion. Okay, so I'm basically gonna kind of give an overview of what site council is, sort of like what we did at the beginning of the school year. So for those of you that don't know, a site council is a building-based representative community, committee, composed of the principal teachers, parents, and community. And at the secondary level, as we heard earlier, students are included as well. Site councils are required to be established by each school pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 71, Section 59(c). And while there's no designated number of times a council must meet during the school year, on average, it's monthly. The school site council members work together with the building leader, and we work to develop and monitor the school's improvement plan, as well as providing input into the budget process. Site councils enhance site-based decision-making, because they expand the participation of a community in its school's decision-making process. So that's about that inclusivity, which is wonderful. The involvement of teachers, parents, and non-parent community members who support the development of a school improvement plan increase the likelihood that the plan will be successfully implemented. And these school improvement plans are written in alignment with and in support of the district's strategic plan. So that's a little background.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm going to speak to the Memorial Site Council. My name is Sarah Drew, and I am a kindergarten teacher at Memorial School. And this year, we met to discuss school updates, school happenings, and to discuss the Memorial School Improvement Plan. While we do have a full year left on our school improvement plan, many of our school priorities are ongoing. At Memorial, our four priorities that make up our school improvement plan, our priority one is safety, belonging, and well-being. Priority two is community engagement and communication. Priority three is curriculum, instruction, and assessment. And our fourth priority is finance, facilities, and personal. And we have accomplished so much, thanks to the staff and families, and the conversations we have been having during our site council meeting have been an invaluable resource to helping us continue to improve Memorial School.
I think what we've heard all along is that there's no way to do our site councils without the many people who sit on them and come to our meetings every time. So I have the pleasure of just sharing with you the names of each of the site council members from each of the three buildings. From Memorial, Leslie Seer, Sally DeGeorge, and Sarah Drew. Megan Boudreaux, Laura Zax, Kathleen Farrell, and Catherine Scott, parent volunteers as well as community reps. From the Wheelock School, Joan Dion, Emily Callahan, Deb Truculis, Jen Murphy, Carol Malouf, Kristen Martin, Laura Zax, Ashley Baughman, Jen Montone, Darcy Robertson, and Mary Beth Reddy. And from Dale Street, Emily Hutton, Nia Jacobs, Tom Ramlo, Lynn Nicholas, Nicholas, excuse me, Kristen Martin, Margot Hayes, Kristen Levangi, and Kelsey McKenzie. And we are so incredibly grateful for all of the work and the time and support that they have given to all three site councils throughout this school year. I think hopefully you've heard, we wouldn't be able to do what we do without them. So thank you to all of them, and we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
That's a lot. I'm glad to see all the participation, I guess, you know, and also the united, that continuity of the community between your buildings as well. I think that's important, as students go through and have similar culture that they build through, you know. I've always been a big critique on the design, obviously, of our school programming, so with the two grades, so the more you can keep it cohesive, there's a cohesive experience for our learners. Thank you.
Yeah, how is it, is it still challenging to recruit parents to site council?
I have not had an issue, I think, you know, the parents stay on for the time that their child is at our building, so it's not like we have to find new people every single year typically, so I haven't had an issue, I'm not sure.
Yeah, not at all. I mean, I think that we've had at Dale Street, and I think Holly's the same at Wheelock, the parents have been there, and the teachers have been great as well. So what happens is if a teacher's on for a couple of years, then what happens is we might sit to a grade level or a specialist, is there any way that somebody else wants to do it? Just to have, have the parents in the meetings hear from a vast variety of the schools, so. But luckily, we've had great parents in the town that sit on there, and some, not a lot, but some will come, as Susan was talking about, the meetings are open, so some will come and join. It doesn't happen often, but all the people up here are busy. I know Emily's here from Dale Street, but she's a teacher herself, so it's like finishing a long day for herself and then doing it, just very grateful. And I know Emily sat on with Wheelock last year, and then when I approached her, you know, to see if she was going to, willing to continue. So everybody, teachers, or all the family members that are there, all have busy lives, so it's such an important part. And you said earlier, Tim, about kind of connecting all the different facets of the school, so really important.
Yeah, no, it's interesting, I mean, in a couple of minutes, we're going to hear from like the elementary PTO and the PTOs, but I would not be surprised, some of the leaders in one may be in the other, and that, you know, it's a good, it's a great thing. So, no, thank you, and thank you. It's been, I think, a couple of years that Dr. Morrison and, you know, we've been talking about just the evolution of the updates, you know, where we are, wanting to be in the site council and hear a little more, so it's, I'm pleased with it, and I appreciate coming out here, and we hopefully are still tracking for getting some people to different games.
Right, for sure.
As well. And I know we have some others, but, no, thank you, unless there's, I didn't want to, Diana, anyone else, am I stepping on toes here?
No, thank you.
So do we want to start with, okay, yeah, thank you, Janie and Karen?
Hello, I'm Janie Boylan. Thank you to the school committee for inviting us to share Medford High School PTO's annual report. We're starting to see an increase in PTO dues at the start of the year, as we believe since COVID, when we didn't ask for any dues over the last, those two years, folk got out of the habit of writing the check at the beginning of the school year. We pushed the request through lawn signs, posters, and email campaigns, and the introduction of using Venmo highly increased our donation rate, too. So we generated $13,800 from that push. We were able to add to the Medfield spirit for the pep rally in October, donating a Medfield scarf to every student and teacher. It was satisfying to see these scarves being worn at sports games and on the marching band during cold events. We sold additional scarves to parents at various sports games for further fundraising. In December, we held a fundraiser with Charmed Frogs, selling Medfield merch online, some from beanies to umbrellas, and we raised an additional $900. In January, we held another fundraiser, inviting the Harlem Wizards to town. This was a wonderful community feel-good event where the whole town was invited to purchase tickets. The Wizards brought their usual high energy and fun, and we'd like to thank all the teachers who participated in playing against them, knowing there will be run and mockery around. They were great sports, and this event generated $18,000. We hosted two luncheons for the all-Medford High School teachers and staff this year. The first was in January, where we asked homemade soups and salads from parents, and the second was in May, where we offered Chipotle. Both seemed to be well-received by everyone. We also supplied snacks, a Keurig coffee machine, and coffee pods for the teachers' lounge during Teacher Appreciation Week. We'd like to thank Sue Tenhagen for coordinating all the hospitality events. We only had two grant requests this year. The first was Chris Heren's motivational talk, he's always so inspirational for the kids, and the second was to pay for all supplies to aid hosting the Model UN event here at Medford High School for the first time. Next year, we'd like to receive more grant requests to help support teacher and student initiatives. We continue to award scholarships to four deserving students selected by the teachers. These are the Community Service Awards, the Excellence Award, and two School Spirit Awards. These were presented on Senior Recognition Night, along with the Teacher Inspirational Award, which is selected by a panel of students. Ms. Brox was the recipient of this award this year. The PTO co-chair, Karen Vasquez, coordinated the volunteers for the prom buses this year, normally sponsored by the Medford High School PTO, but was generously paid for MCAP this year. This year, oh, and we'd just like to make a point, we'd love more participation by high school parents and teachers, as we are a PTO, but normally it's just the three of us, as much as I like that. This year was the 31st year of Medfield's traditional all-night grad party. Putting off this monumental event for the graduating class of 24 truly required a collective effort. Thank you to all senior parents who donated towards the event. It cost $200 per senior, so their contributions really do help. To make it, we do make it a donation, so that everyone can participate, no matter their means. So we had 60% of the class donate, and there was also a town-wide mailer requesting donations, and we wrote to local businesses, too. We extend our sincerest gratitude to each and every volunteer for their contribution, no matter how big or small. It certainly takes a village to pull off the all-night grad, and to ensure the safety of our Medfield graduates while creating memories and joy that will last a lifetime. Thank you to all those who spent weeks designing and creating decorations under complicated new requirements and restrictions from the Medfield Fire Department. Why are you laughing? The space looked amazing, it was truly transformed. Thank you to those who helped set up the space on Friday, it was the smoothest setup we've ever experienced, and we were out of here by 9:00 p.m., unheard of. Thank you to those who brought the joy from arranging the entertainment, working casino games, bringing the music, and facilitating the singing. One kid astonished all his friends with an incredible singing voice. He had never participated in any school music program, so it was such a shock to everyone. So thank you for creating the moments of surprise and joy that the kids will cherish for a very long time. Thank you to those who checked folk in, served food, distributed gift bags to those who couldn't make it, lug stuff from point A to point B and then back again, attended to those who weren't feeling well, kept the kids safe in all the areas, coordinated all 125 volunteers, and dismantled the party with us bright and early on Sunday morning. While I was dropping off prizes to seniors on Sunday, a senior came to the door and said, that was the best event I've ever experienced. So that, and that the fact that they were all kept safe reinforces, it was all worth it. Remind me I said that next year. Congratulations to the class of 24, and here's to the class of 25. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sophia, do you chair the all-night graduation party as well?
Yes.
Yeah, as soon as I saw you come up, I was like, oh, thank, like, how many, I hope we have more kids. I mean, every year, we're, I remember, we're so thankful that you're out there, but that's an impressive list of what the PTO did, right off the bat, and we all know what the all-night graduation party takes. So that's, it's got to be tireless.
Janie's been doing this for years, she's heavily involved in such a good way with PTO, with all-night grad party. Anytime we need anything, we need to rally parents, she's just been off in time, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janie.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you. Great, great.
Thank you for all of your work and everything you do. Very welcome. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Janie. I'm Nicole, here, or is, Nicole's hiding over there. Speaking of tireless.
Hi, everybody. Thank you once again for having me and for allowing me to represent the K-38 PTO. My name is Nicole Drummond, I am in my fourth year of the K-38 PTO presidency. The K-38 PTO includes individual school PTOs from Memorial, Wheelock, Dale, and Blake, and the overall K-38 PTO, that all grant initiatives to, that impact all four of our schools. This school year, we are calling it the Year of Yes, so from all five of the PTOs. Thanks to some creative and well-supported fundraising, including our second annual Rainbow Run, that raised over $90,000 for our four schools in September, we found ourselves with a really good problem, and we could say yes to everything that we were asked. So the K-38 PTOs gave over $151,000 back to our four schools this year, and so that includes pre-K all the way through eighth grade. The K-38 PTO, the individual umbrella, gave about $20,000. K-38 PTO, the individual umbrella, gave about ten thousand dollars. Memorial was able to give about twenty-eight thousand dollars. Wheelock gave thirty-two thousand dollars. Dale was able to give forty-seven thousand dollars of portable, that will always be able to be movable and not permanent, donations. And Blake gave about thirty-four thousand dollars, which is amazing because the middle school historically has had a hard time with support. So really thankful for all of the parents and teachers that have been able to give back and and help us. Some highlights include a new book vending machine at Dale, STEM enrichment, author visits, field trip support at Dale, the preschool music classes at Memorial and Wheelock, which we always support. Memorial gave fourteen thousand dollars toward a new climbing structure, and a donation was made by a lovely family for lining the blacktop for games with like hopscotch and foursquare, which has never been done before. So it looks amazing. The teachers lounge at Wheelock is in the middle of being redone. The we have new picnic tables at Wheelock. We have new recess equipment. The Wheelock PTO funded all buses for all field trips. And Wheelock, it will also be there next year. They're going to be making a large donation on behalf of the current third grade that's moving on to Dale toward the stage in the cafeteria. So with the help of MCPE, their donation, and we will also be doing some great fundraising called Set the Stage. And that fundraiser will be launching actually this summer with allowing current families, alumni, and friends to purchase tiles to be placed on the walls of Wheelock to raise money for us to finish off that potential of a stage so that we can be hosting other events there. Blake also did some amazing things. They, as always, they always give shaved ice and stuff for the sixth through eighth graders at the end of the year. But they did maker space improvement, guest speakers, transportation, and they also added two water filling stations. And they stocked the faculty room. They cleaned it and stocked it. So it looks great. Once again, we'd like to thank all of the parents, guardians, teachers, staff, for all their continued support. We cannot do this without everybody's generosity. And we always, the financial support is amazing. But just since I have my plug, volunteering is what makes Medfield go around. So in order for us to do all of those amazing things, we need the help as much as we can. So the PTO overall has been always talking about it and trying to streamline things so that parents can become more involved and not feel like it's an obligation. So we continue to work toward that. And we look forward to the 2024-2025 school year. We have some great new individuals coming onto our boards again, which we're really excited about. I want to thank Kelly Scoboe, who has been my partner in crime for the past 10 years. Kelly and I are both rolling off of all elementary PTOs. So we still have fourth graders, so we'll still be around. But I'm really excited to to see what the future is. We had a great meeting last night. And Seema Patel is taking on the presidency, and Beth Rommel is taking on the treasurer, and they already have some amazing thoughts that can really help with some just general need that is there. So thank you again for always allowing us to share our accomplishments. Questions?
Amazing stuff.
Yeah, congratulations. That was a busy year, huh?
Loved the book vending machines.
Always busy.
By the way, those are cool.
It must have felt nice to end on a Year of Yes.
Yes.
Because I feel like you've done a ton as well over the years to help get to this point, to be able to do a Year of Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything you and Kelly have done.
Except when they asked her to do another year.
I don't think they asked.
Way over my ears.
I was shopping that for a while.
I don't think Nicole would be, after a Year of Yes, saying no if she wasn't confident in the team that's coming on. I mean, that's, you know, I see that. I'm almost gonna ask. We've been through a few, you know, tough, tough years.
Yeah.
But it seems to me momentum's really positive.
It is.
The financial part is amazing. It's the people and feeling good about the boards and the leadership.
Absolutely. Yeah, I'm excited. I really, I feel so, we've worked so hard to kind of to get to the place that we're in, and it's in really good hands. So I feel really good about it. There's plenty of other volunteer opportunities out there.
Yeah, I heard they're looking for the all-night graduation party.
Don't worry. I was gonna, nobody asked me, I'm really good. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Thanks for everything.
And we have our MCPE.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, School Committee, Dr. Marsden, for having me here. I'm Rachel Daly. I'm here on behalf of the MCPE. I am going into my third year now as co-president along with Katie Murray for the 24-25 school year. We're very excited to welcome aboard five new members who are really excited to have, very enthusiastic people, as six of our members roll off and we just said goodbye to them. It has been, well, we thought it would be a hard year to follow on the heels of our thirty-fifth anniversary with MCPE, where we granted a hundred thousand dollars to each of the five, well, across the five schools, twenty thousand to each of the five schools, on top of, I think it was at least another fifty thousand in our regular grant cycles. So following on the heels of that, we had our work cut out for us this year, and we definitely rose up and met that challenge. We had a wonderful year. We raised almost eighty-three thousand dollars total over all of our initiatives this year. That included Fall Fest, where we hosted at the Dover Legion, the German club in Dover. Fall Fest brought in about twenty-five thousand dollars, and we had a wonderful night with about four hundred Medfield residents. Many of your faces I saw there. It was a really fun night of music and dancing. And we also had our Giving Tuesday, our beloved Spelling Bee. That brought in a record number of participants. I'm not sure if it was a coincidence, or it may have been because we actually switched up the schedule a bit, allowed our older kids, our Dale kids, to go before our Wheelock kids. It was something that parents had kind of been requesting. It's possible it's a coincidence, but we like that it brought in many more of the Dale kids that wanted to participate, as well as a record number of Wheelock kids. So that was a wonderful event. We had our March Madness event, trivia night, always a great time, partnered with Chipotle. A new one we brought in this year was Mother's Day Wine and Charcuterie. That was an excellent event. Hopefully, many of the moms in our community enjoyed that one as well. And finally, our Blue Ribbon Campaign, which saw a record number of nominations at two hundred and one educators. That was fantastic. And actually, I'd like to credit, someone on our team reached out, and you guys helped us send a district-wide email. So we may be hitting you up for that sort of.
No problem.
Yeah, that that's sort of, you know, getting us in front of all the families out there in the future. I think that really, that really helped push the numbers. So in total, we raised over seventy thousand dollars this year, and we granted out almost eighty-three thousand dollars. That was collectively over twenty-two grants. Some of the grants I'd like to highlight for you, there were many, but if I could just run through a quick list here. Some of them have actually already been mentioned tonight. Nicole just mentioned the water bottle fillers. We were proud to partner with the PTO on that one to bring water, much-needed water bottle fillers to Blake. Let's see, Read, Ride, and Rejuvenate at Dale Street. Some of you may have seen the pictures of kids on the bikes at Dale, helping them be active while they're getting their reading done. Grade Five Science and Engineering Visiting Science Unit, that was at Dale. We also had Code Like a Scientist at Blake. The younger kids, Memorial, Wheelock, and Dale had refining K to five robotics. Some other big ones, there, we had a professional development that we funded called Empowering Communities to Benefit Blake and the High School. We had, sorry, included in all of this in the twenty-two grants is actually two specifically funded by the ONWARD Committee. So the committee that had originally been formed during the pandemic continues to give back some of the grants that have come in under the heading of SEL, we have sent to them, and they've been interested in specifically funding those. One of those this year was the Bionic Project Grant. And I understand they just wrapped up their third visit. There'll be two more in the fall to Blake and the high school. And I've heard wonderful things about how that's gone. So that's very exciting. And we're proud to help ONWARD continue to, you know, give back to the to the Medfield Public Schools. So that is a highlight of a number of our grants this year. We recently capped the year with our annual meeting on May 21st, hosted at Zulo. Two awards were given there. The first was the Thomas A. Reese Award, and that went to Chris Voss, Kate Jones, and Robert Parga for the Medfield High School Video Studio Grant. That was a really exciting one, and we thought well deserved to them. A little background behind the Reese Award is, Thomas Reese actually was the founder of MCPE. And this grant is supposed to go to someone that exemplifies at least one of the qualities that Tom Reese believed in. Not only was he the co-founder of MCPE, but he's also a former Medfield Superintendent. So this goes to someone who promotes cooperation among schools and community, develops new programs of study, and highlights creativity and innovation in the classroom. So that was a well-deserved grant to Chris Voss, Kate Jones, and Robert Parga. The second award that was given out at our annual meeting is the Robert C. McGuire Award. A little bit about that. Each year, it's our honor to recognize educators and community members who make Medfield Public Schools so special. The Robert C. McGuire Global Perspectives and Education Award is given to a staff member whose effort embodies our former superintendent, Bob McGuire's vision for further developing students' global understanding, and inspires them to look beyond the town of Medfield and learn more about the global community through innovative programs. So this year, the award was presented to Ryan Dexter, who's the Elementary and Middle School Band Director. And it seemed apropos that he actually was not there to receive the award in person because he was busy with students at a concert that evening. So but we did receive a very nice message from him thanking us for the award. He enjoyed that honor. So we look forward to continuing to partner with teachers, all the educators, faculty, and staff in the coming year. It's been a very exciting year. The fact that we had twenty-two grants that we were able to fund is a wonderful number. We hope to continue to bring grants in. We have three cycles throughout the year. Our first cycle, beginning in the fall, was the most active cycle that I personally have been a part of. I think we had fifteen grants that we were reviewing then. The numbers fell off in the middle of the year. For our second cycle, went back up a little bit for the third cycle. We're definitely going to be doing a lot to reach out to teachers, reach out to staff, sort of encourage and ask, you know, what do you need? What do you need in the classrooms? Where are you seeing a deficit? Where are you seeing, you know, something that you just can't get by without? Something that needs to be replaced, whatever it is. There's a lot of criteria that we go to to review the grants. Of course, we talk about innovation. Of course, we talk about enrichment. But it's not, you know, all or nothing. There's lots of reasons why we may decide to grant funds. So we are excited to see what the teachers and faculty and staff bring to us next year. And I think that's it. Does anyone have any questions? Oh, sorry. I will just say one thing. Little plug, save the date for our Fall Ball 2024. It is going to be November 15th, 2024, at the Cape Club of Sharon. It's gonna be a good time and beautiful space there. If you guys haven't seen it before, sort of an indoor/outdoor space, we're gonna be able to utilize there, with heating, of course, in in November. Yeah. Any questions?
I always ask them. No, thank you. I mean, it's it's amazing list. The way you closed, I love. I'm gonna share, no one ever comes to like our house and say, hey, is there anything you need? We know how much we need. But I'm thinking if you're a teacher here, like, that's great to hear.
Yeah.
You know what? They're coming out and they're saying, what do you need? You can't promise a yes, but Nicole was promising the yes this year.
No, we can't promise a yes, but we absolutely can promise a conversation.
Yeah.
Try to see, you know, what we can do, how we can make it happen. And the ideas certainly come from the schools, the faculty there, those people. But we're here to try to help facilitate. How can we make it happen? Maybe it's a matter of partnering with the PTO. Maybe it's a matter of a conversation with Dr. Marsden about, you know, what what should this look like? Is it part of the budget already? Is there anything we can do to make this work? And certainly, the most important thing is our wonderful donors continuing to come to us and trusting us with their funds to then put back into the schools. So thank you very much for having me. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight.
Thanks so much. And what did, for the Kristen and the MMA, was she not here?
Right. She she sent a presentation that's in your packet.
Okay, are we? Yeah, we were not gonna go through it.
I think so, no.
Yeah, okay. All right. Yeah. So let's just say the MMA is in the packet, so we can look at that.
I just think, I know we say it every year, but I think it's really clear, especially this year. We just couldn't operate what we do without these organizations. I mean, the amount of support that we get, the amount of donations that parents give, little donations, big donations, big grants, small grants, just amazing what they do for. So I just, I can't thank organizations enough in behalf of the teachers and staff and everyone else. It's just incredible. We're so lucky. We're just so lucky to be here and have this support.
It's extremely impressive. I would say, you know, working with the PTOs in the city of Newton, which was that size, the dollar figures you're talking about, actually much larger than a city like that as well. So the support is amazing. So thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah. I mean, finally, too, it's the financial support, but it's also that that other voice. And that's the thing that I think, I think Nicole said that earlier.
And the community connections.
Yeah, no, thank you. It's, I'm glad we were able to, we carved some things out to give you all a little more time, too. So thank you. So that, I think, wraps it up for new business. Then I would shift to consent agenda. Unless, is there anything else, any other new items since posting?
So I would just add, we did put the tennis court renovation out to bid. And, you know, that was something at town meeting that we had talked about. We did not get any bidders for that. And Michael, is it two years out?
Yeah.
Many of the companies say they're, you know, it's only twenty-four months out, backed up on work.
Wow.
So we're gonna kind of, we're gonna rebid it again and see if we get additional folks that are interested. But we did not get any takers on that at all.
How big's the project again?
Is it three hundred thousand total? Three twenty-five total. So we will try again. We'll resubmit and see if we get anyone that's interested in doing, especially this summer. We want, our goal is to get it this summer, ready for September, so.
And if we don't find a bidder for the summer, will we just accept one of the bids?
We didn't get any bids at all.
Oh, we didn't get any bids. Well, I didn't know if even if they're two, like, I've gone through this tennis rething again in another community that I'm dealing with. So you can't get on the schedule two years out?
We could.
Right. That's what I'm saying. If we don't, like, I think at some point, if that is how long you have to wait, I think we may just have to say, we have to get on the schedule.
Right. They have to submit, they have to submit the bid. And the thing is, issue with, the issue is the fiscal year. So it's allocated for this fiscal year for FY25. So we'd have to.
We'd have to redo it.
Work with the town or something like that. So but hopefully, we'll get a bid second time around.
Much my pickleball this summer.
There's not a lot of companies that do it, is the.
There isn't.
So that's why.
And Cape and Islands is a company that we've used before, and they did our track as well. And they're just booked out solid.
Yep.
That's all I have for this. Okay.
So for the consent agenda, one is the regular meeting minutes. And do you want to, I guess I can, I can go through donations.
Sure.
And then the second is the donations. So if there's anything that, as we say, if there's anything that needs to be called out, let me know. Otherwise, we'll vote on that. For the donations, and in line, some of this, we heard about some of these, but eight thousand one hundred and sixty-three dollars from MCPE to be deposited into the Blake Middle School account for Code Like a Scientist and Courtside Connections. Four thousand dollars from MCPE and the ONWARD for trauma-informed practices. $4,000 from MCPE and the ONWARD for trauma-informed practices. $2,277.42 from the MCPE to be deposited into the Wheelock School MCPE account for grants for the sensory brake stations and flexible seating. $4,094.47 from MCPE to deposit into the Memorial MCPE account for Play With a Purpose. $900 from WestEd to be deposited into the Blake Gift Account. $3,000 from the Blake PTO to be deposited in the Blake Gift Account. And $1,000 from Raymond Charlacken to be deposited into the Memorial Gift Account. And that's, donation is being made in memory of Darla Charlacken, a former librarian at Dale Street. So one, thank you for the donations on behalf of the school committee. And so is there a motion to approve the regular minutes and the donations as read?
So move, Michelle.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Nat's over there showing off.
Okay, so now we're going to go to old business. Glad I brought a printout today. So we're going to, school start times. Is it Mary?
So, so Mary and Robert are here to do a presentation on school start times. I know there's a couple of members of the committee as well. So the, the committee has met several times and they put together a presentation, review that and to make a recommendation. They made a recommendation to me already, but to, to present that to you. And I think then we'll have some conversation about it. I know Will and Diana are a part of that as well, so.
You can bear with, bear with us for just one second. Again, as you pull it up, thank you too for taking the time to chair this, for both of
Do we have a score for the game of sex? I feel like we could hear them starting, but I haven't heard anything since.
It's probably 10 to 2. Probably the second round. Now with these mics.
We went with Robert's computer because mine gave us a hard time last time. We were preemptively setting ourselves up for success.
Well, he works in this building too, so you would also think.
All right. There we go.
Commodore.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for joining and thank you for some of the committee members for remaining for the presentation. We're excited to kind of discuss some of the work that the committee did as well as kind of final thoughts from the committee. So one of the first parts that we had the benefit of hearing from Dr. Hannah Gardner, who spoke to us about what the medical literature really says about the science of sleep. And for us, this was really kind of setting the stage so that we had a thorough understanding and a common understanding amongst the committee in terms of what that medical literature says. One piece is that adolescents and teenagers typically need 9.25 hours of sleep per night to promote health. Reduced sleep duration has been associated with many poor health outcomes, including impaired cognitive functioning, school performance, attention, mood, cardiovascular health, as well as risk-taking and behavior problems. As a result, adequate sleep is crucial for brain and heart health, both short term and long term, and that's true for children, for teenagers, and adults. The natural circadian rhythms change during adolescence and that makes it extremely hard for most adolescents and teenagers to go to sleep before 10:45, even in ideal environments. And that was something that I think was interesting for everyone to hear. So even when you're kind of saying like, you need to go to bed earlier, you have to get up early tomorrow morning, you can say it all you want, but that's natural circadian rhythm is just not allowing them to really kind of get to that point where they can get to sleep until 10:45. So, and that's on average, of course, but it was interesting to kind of hear that even if you say like, oh, kids just need to go to bed earlier, sometimes that is just physically not possible.
Great. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the meetings and actually I should let you know. So we had a committee of 23 members of our committee that included a couple of students, teachers, parents, administrators, a couple of school committee members. So we started meeting back in February. Our first meeting, we developed some norms for how this committee was going to work. As Mary said, Dr. Gardner presented to us to share some of her research. And we, as a group, just brainstormed and thought about some challenges that we anticipated as we were going through this process. Our March meeting, what we decided to do was to break up the committee into subgroups that you can see up here. We wanted to really kind of get into more details and the nitty gritty that would involve these, these different groups. So we had a group from the committee working on some staff considerations, some family and student considerations. We needed to really look at the schedule and how that might be impacted by any change, transportation, extracurricular activity, things of that nature. So that really helped us to, you know, individually or in groups, really hone in on some items that we needed to give a lot of thought to before, you know, we could get to a point where we could even consider any sort of recommendation. In April, we invited Michael LaFrancesca, our Director of Finance, and Eric Scott, our Athletic Director. So as a group, we just needed more information from them. We needed to know how this could impact busing. So Michael did a great job of sharing some of the details in terms of routes within the community, the fact that it takes about 35 minutes or so, Michael, from one drop off to another pickup in terms of the secondary school versus the elementary schools. So that really helped us begin to look at sort of what sort of times we would be looking at. So Michael's input was very helpful. Eric spoke to us about sort of the impact on sports. So there are 12 teams in the Tri-Valley League right now. Nine schools have already switched to a later start time. So over the past couple of years, we in essence have already shifted our start times for athletics because almost everybody we play, play at this point can't get to Medfield High School for the start times that we used to use. So in terms of how this would impact our students now, because we've made this switch from when games start, it, it sort of is going to have almost a minimal impact for us. The unknown is busing still. Making sure that the buses can get back from their school drop offs to pick up our teams to take them to various games. But it was reassuring to hear from Eric that, you know, because we've made these changes over the past couple of years, the impact on sports would be, would be minimal. In May, we reviewed a public forum. We held a forum in here with community members to answer some questions. We looked at data reviewing the start times of all the teams within our district. We looked at attendance rate, data for both the middle school and high school and determined that if enough information was going to be there to vote, we could. If not, we would, you know, still continue doing our, our research. We did a survey for students or for families and students, actually. You can see some of the data there from the family surveys. In general, it was sort of overwhelming in terms of the family support, parent support for a later start time. So that was pretty clear to us. You can see some of the student data that we were able to capture and a lot of it makes sense. Middle school students go to bed on average between, you know, 9:30 and 10:30 PM, certainly with some exceptions. High school from 10:30 to 11:30. The students in grades eight through 12 answered the survey. They gave us their thoughts as I shared with some of the, at our forum and with our committee. You know, when you ask students for information surveys, it's always interesting some of the data we get. Probably not a surprise that a lot of students are very interested in us starting later, but ending at the same time we're ending now, which is, as we know.
There was even one that asked from Blake if we could start later and then potentially end earlier.
That's a good one. Right? From the mouths of babes. But anyway, their, their data.
They would get.
Hey, it's all about how you propose it.
So the data was in general in support of a later start time. Obviously for both families and students, it's hard to give, you know, all the information that we're looking for because we haven't presented them with any times yet. But the general idea was yes, based on the research and based on sort of what we were able to present to them at a later start time would be beneficial for the students at the secondary level.
So these are some of the known factors that we had when we were kind of considering and having these conversations as well. One, and we wanted this to kind of get out there as quickly as possible, is that the switch or the flipping of the current schedules for elementary and secondary schools would have elementary students at the bus when it was dark. And that really was kind of a non, non-starter for us. So there was conversation immediately, we had, you know, a good number of parents on the committee and immediately one of the first questions was, is, is this just an automatic flopping of the schedules? And we were very clear that we at no time wanted to have elementary students in the dark waiting for a bus. So that was one known factor. Again, as Robert had mentioned, Michael let us know that 35 minutes at a minimum is needed between schedules. We also knew that the teacher contract workday is seven hours and 15 minutes. So anything kind of going outside of that or thinking outside of that is even more negotiations than already may be needed. Any recommended schedules would need a discussion of traffic patterns and their impact on busing. And that one piece that we had a conversation about is that the Medfield Public Schools' Before School Program is run by the schools. So if there was a change, that there was an increase in need before school, that is something that we do have control over. So at that final meeting, we did have a conversation with the committee as to whether or not they felt they had enough information at that time to make a recommendation, yes or no, in terms of whether or not to change the school's start time. The current school's start time for secondary is 7:40 AM and 8:25 or 8:30, depending on the school for elementary. The committee members voted unanimously that they wanted yes to, to propose that there was a recommendation for a school's start time. Then we said that we would come up with models for consideration. A big piece of this was that these are models for consideration that we are bringing forth to Dr. Marston and to the school committee. These are things that kind of consider all of the information that we know. Some of the science of sleep was considered as well as the busing schedules, but anything that has to be done still needs a lot of work beyond this. So some of those recommendations, one was that secondary schools would start at 8:25. That would give an additional 45 minutes of sleep. And the elementary schools would start at 9:00 AM. A second was that the secondary school's start time would be at 8:35. That would again give us 55 minutes of additional sleep. And the elementary school's start time would be at 8:00 AM. And then the secondary school's start time, I can't exactly remember how we got to 8:43, but we did math, we did a lot of numbers and calculations, and we ended at a very precise 8:43 AM start with an elementary school's start time of 8:08 AM. No, no. Well, I mean, probably, we probably did.
It had to do with what time the sun rises and sets on the longest and shortest day of the year to make sure no one was standing in the dark on like either end. So there was like a, there was a reason behind that.
Yes. We definitely tried to make sure based off of the longest and shortest days that whoever was going to be picked up first would not be picked up in the dark, given the current times that are necessary. So the next steps are that we are bringing the, we brought the recommendation of the committee to Dr. Marston. Dr. Marston will now be bringing a recommendation to school committee. The union negotiations due to any proposed changes, obviously. And then a big piece was that this will not be happening until the 25, 26 school year, which we didn't mention exactly at this, but we did have a forum, a public forum as well, in addition to the surveys in order to gain some perspective. So that was another piece that we wanted to reinforce at the public forum was that this place, this change would not take place until the 25, 26 school year.
Can you remind those of us who don't have kids yet in the middle and high school? I see those kids on the corner quite early. What time does the middle school and the high school start right now?
Seven forty.
Seven forty, yeah.
And I think that's first bell. That's start of class. That's not.
Yeah.
And about.
The bus.
And the bus first pickup is at 6:50, I believe they said. So with a 7:40 start, which is why we went through to find out when sunrise was on the, on the kind of shortest day of the year. And it had a sunrise, I think at like 7:08, which is why we said 8:00 AM would be the earliest because that would have the first bus pickup at 7:10 AM.
Yeah. And that was, thank you. You just didn't, saved me a lot of math.
I just put up here too, just so you can see the, the current start time for both schools and then the proposed.
Kids are talking about it because my seventh grader told me these times before I saw
And how many people came to the public forum?
Five, five members at the public forum. One student, which was wonderful. Lots of committee.
Was it the earlier, start later and gonna show later student?
He, I know. He actually, he, his father actually pointed out that the reason he was there was because the student wanted to come to learn more and to support the school's start time change. So it was great to have, as you said, mouths of babes and future is bright. It was great to see that he was there, ready to advocate too.
My, my curiosity is going to be on the impact on staffing at that seven hours, 15 minutes contractual time. That puts them not able to leave at like four o'clock, about 8:43 start, right? Almost four o'clock.
Depends when their day starts.
Yeah.
Yeah. Currently, the, the before school time is minimal and the after school time is heavier. So that's, that would be a piece that would be considered with the union in terms of before school and after school start and end.
So the union indicated to me that they'd like to start talking about this in September, that they would like to look at it because there's obviously implications for their membership and teachers and staff and everyone and making sure. And that's why I'm going to make the recommendation that in concept that we move in this direction, but I can't give you a time out of those three because we need to have those conversations with the union. So I think if, if we have a little bit of patience with that part of it, because there's a change in working conditions, we need to kind of work through that. But they, we had the union president as part of, you know, this committee and she was a part of every single meeting. So I think, and I meet with the faculty advisory every month and we've been talking about it for months. If, if this were to happen, what is the impact, that kind of thing? So I think we've got a good, good start there, but we'd have to nail down the times in a way that, that makes sense. I would ask that when you do vote, which I know you're not voting tonight, but if you do vote, I can give you some more background on kind of in concept of changing the times for 25, 26, but with nailing the times down by say October or whatever, you know, whatever timeline you set for me so that we can bring that to the community and make sure everyone understands that with enough, enough notice. And that's the intent of this. I know some people thought we were going to do this in September and we really wanted to give people a year to plan for this, whether it's daycare, whether it's us with the busing. It takes some time to plan this out and look at the traffic patterns, those types of things. So it's not a rush by any means. We're giving it an entire year after whether, if you vote to accept this, this month or...
What's the process on the traffic patterns? Like what, what would, how would we? Is there a method for data collection to say at the 8:43 hour?
So we've, we've talked with Mo, our DPW director, and he's put us in touch with some folks that can look at, at doing a study where they would see, you know, what the impact would be during that time.
During those times.
Yeah. I mean, the issue is that costs money, right? So the Metropolitan Planning Group has done some for school districts for free. So we've reached out to them and hopefully we can work with them to, to do that, letting them know what we're doing as far as the school start times and hoping they can help us in that regard.
And the question came up, Leo, was right now, we need 35 minutes between buses, but is it like, do we need 40 minutes? So it's like changing. That was right, the traffic pattern implication.
I know when we got rid of that third run of buses at Wheelock, eight or nine years ago whenever we did that, that really changed the traffic pattern in a positive way. The DPW had reported to us that they would have gridlock because of that third run that came through for Wheelock and because that was eliminated. came through for Wheelock, and because that was eliminated, it was just the start time for the secondary school and the elementary school, and then it was done. So, it does impact traffic, you know, when we have buses running, so.
So, and I want to procedurally, so you would be making a recommendation to us. We may or may not choose to vote. If we voted, we would say the school committee is suggesting these start times.
So, the vote you'd be asking-
Would it be contingent on-
Yeah.
Successful negotiations or, yeah.
Or it could be, maybe there's a range.
Or sort of vote to engage.
It could be, it could be the school committee votes to accept one of these, you know, with the clarity of that, depending on your negotiations.
Well, I think what we have to do, if you accept one and that impacts operation, like, we have to, we haven't gone through this with the bus company and operationally decide whether we can actually do some of these things. We've had at a high level, but not with the granular level of 8:43.
Tim, I think the voters thing-
Do that work too.
Empower Dr. Marsden to go and engage in the process.
Just direct me to do it, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't even sure that we need to vote on that.
Probably not, no, like, but I think, I don't-
Like, I mean, what I'm hearing is, we need more, you need a little more data before you can give us, make a recommendation to us.
Well, I can make a recommendation to you today. I know you said, when you and I talked, you weren't gonna vote, you're gonna, you guys are gonna think about it and take a look at it, but the recommendation for, for me would be to look at and to change the times for 25-26 pending successful negotiations with Medfield Teachers Association, which will drive some of that operational stuff around start time, end time, and those kinds of things. Because there's a lot to that part of it, which a committee couldn't do.
The goal is, Jeff is, I mean, Tim is, I, he was looking for the vote just to engage in the, just to, and go down the road.
And say that we're supportive, basically, of the time change, depending.
Like, some sort of time change.
Yes.
Yeah, and that's kind of where I was leaning towards, you know, some- I think you'd have a second vote in the fall with the exact times.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's how you'd do it.
Okay.
Throw a nod vote on this tonight?
No, we are gonna vote it on June, on June 20th.
The next one?
Yeah. So, the first part of the June 20th meeting will be a regular meeting, and then we'll move into workshop.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you to everyone on the committee as well.
Absolutely. A lot of time.
A lot of work and a lot of hours put in, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I know that these committees outside of ours do take a lot of extra time, so thank you, Dr. Gardner and all the people that aren't here right now, and the people that are here right now that took the time to put this together. I've done a lot of research on this space, and I, I know that, I just feel like you could do some really positive stuff for our kids, so I'm hopeful that this all works out, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanna point out that actually, none of the, I'm actually achieving.
Why did I know she was going there?
So, it's like any, any that helps, but we don't actually get, get those nine.
So, what time would we need, Dr. Gardner?
I think, so, nine and a quarter, so if we assume 10:45, three, nine and a quarter means waking up at 8:00 a.m., and I think with 8:43 a.m. start, I think the buses would come around 8:00 a.m.
Okay.
So-
We're getting closer, getting closer, getting closer.
We're maybe around a half an hour short, and, you know, some kids need an hour to get ready, other kids need five minutes, but we're, we're about a half an hour short with that 8:43 start.
And we, we're flexible to an 8:45 if the-
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for all the work.
Appreciate your insight, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Robert. Yeah, thank you. So, the school building committee update. And thanks again. Thanks, Nat.
Thanks.
Yeah, you have 40 minutes. Yes, the SBC met last evening. We went over the information that came from the four public forums that were held over the past couple weeks. Kind of looked at the data and had some discussions of what we need to do next, and we're gonna be sending out a survey to try to get more data. The main subject of the forums was around site selection, so the survey that will be going out will also help take some of the feedback that we got from the forums and add some questions that start to help us be able to get additional information from the community in regards to what they're looking for with a, with a new project. So, do you have anything you wanna add, Leo? Tim, you were there.
Fifty-seven people.
Correct, fifty-seven people came to the forums and put a dot down.
You had pretty good, I mean, as the, had more of the forums, they got more popular? They got more, better attendance?
They were, they were strategically placed at different times and places.
Yeah.
So, and the one that was at the, the center at Medfield happened to be in midday, you know, when people would be there, so that was done on purpose.
I was thinking it was the buzz from the first one.
Well, you know.
No, I don't think so.
Nothing like it. I think there's some common questions that continue to come up that the committee is going to try to address in communication about costs, you know, and that, those are always the questions, some of those. And then, there's lots of conversation about, you know, we need a school, so what to do if we do not get into MSBA this December? And so, a lot of strong conversation and decisions that will be made. The co-presidents are, all the co-chairs are, are really trying to move this ball, get this ball rolling with or without MSBA to, to get some, a solution in place.
Yeah, I thought, you know, I was glad, I, it was enjoyable for me to see it, you know, just to me, it seemed like, no, I mean, to be in the meeting with the committee, to, everyone's working hard, you could, you know, you, it was interesting just listening to you as you were describing it. It was almost like you wanna have a, like, a flowchart that says, if this happens, we do this and we do this, and you just, you don't have that degree of certainty.
Yeah. The questions are legitimate. People wanna know how much it's going to cost. I guess I was a little surprised that they hadn't looked at the previous cost sheet that we had, which had a lot of demonstration of the differences between the solutions. So, like, the difference between add-reno and I, or just to renovate and bring Dale up to code, you know, then if we add on a wing, what's that cost? And if we just build new on the same site, you know, there's, and seeing those cost differences, even though they're all gonna be higher now, because that was in 20, those costs are from 2020, they're all gonna be higher now, but to see the differences between the two, I think. And so, and then, there was some drawings too that we resurfaced and I shared with the committee, that there was a lot of information that we spent, we spent our million dollars on last time that should be utilized, so. So, I think there'll be a new survey coming out, so please, for those of you who, for the tens of people watching this, please answer the survey and spread it around, and we should communicate it out and push it out through our socials as well, definitely, to get the feedback, because that's the, really what we need is the continuous feedback. And I thought the other good thing about it was the choice ranking piece, was your suggestion, which I appreciate, and I think it's good, because it, when you can choose, you know, first choice, second choice, third choice, it gives a different perspective of what people are thinking.
Right.
And then, our next meeting is June 26th, I think we said?
Yeah.
Not till I 3rd.
No, we're not gonna do July 3rd, I know, shocking as that may be. We pushed it up a week before.
Okay. So, all right, thank you. The community engagement and communication, we're down to, what, five days?
I was gonna push them all together, today got away from me. Yeah, I mean, school year's coming to a rap. I feel like we had a good year with our communication and community engagement initiatives. I think we can add that as an item at the agenda, maybe. CPAC again, like, Melissa did so much work, and I think we, we ended up feeding off each other in a positive way in that space, and I think that worked well for both of us. Yeah, it's good, it was good, good year.
Yeah, not, not for sure. It seemed like, I mean, I just liked other folks' feedback, you know, us going out, kind of meet you where they are, you know, Will going into some of the CPACs and going to the PTO, I, I would, I, the times I went, I thought it was positive, you know, and just general themes on that is, like, do we wanna continue to do that next year?
I think so.
I think so.
Yes. And, yeah, I, I mean, I think we saw it. It jumped off the page at us with the first hour of this meeting today.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, that's part of what we, you know, I think we said a few years ago, turn ourselves inside out a little bit, you know, like, really, let's make sure we are, you know, as accessible and, and, you know, driving community, that's, a lot of times when we get contacted, sometimes I say, you know, someone has a problem in school, such and such, have you talked to your site council?
Yeah.
Right, look, we're glad to take it on, but I just wanna, you know, work out there, so, I think it's been positive, you know, change and-
Yeah, I think the going to the PTOs and CPAC and that stuff is good. The community things were not as successful. I don't know that we needed to do those again.
I mean, the office hours?
The office hours.
Yeah, it was good time, I mean, Will got to get caught up. I haven't hot-talked you about since you've gone to Ireland, no one.
I'm just saying, like, we are, we are here, and like, one of the themes of tonight is all of this awesome stuff is run by very few people. Just name that, like, Michelle asks for volunteers all the time. All this stuff gets done by, like, those people, so I think it's good for us to go meet with the PTOs and those, because there are about, you know, however many names, I can't put a number, but it's definitely well under 100, that do a lot of work to give our kids a lot of extra things, in addition to our great teachers and people that work with school.
Agreed.
Yeah, that, and we can think about that, and we can talk a little bit down in the workshop, but if, maybe we cut it in half.
Yeah.
You know? Once in a while, I just think it's almost, like, as the teachers create, as we created the conferences in the high school, sometimes it's getting somebody in the door to have the conversation, and then they start really engaging, you know?
Oh, I agree, I just, not that many people walk through the door.
Right.
Yeah, I think one of the things that you could do is put a subject on it, a specific subject, so that people would have-
Yeah, that might be a good idea.
-jog, and like, an idea to, that way, you can talk, two people can talk, and it's not a quarant, you know, it's-
Yeah.
Legit, and you can have people then have a conversation, you know, and could be about, I don't know, could be about anything, that's current with us, right? School start time, maybe school start time. And then, two other people, the, the committee also have that same thing, talking school start time, so, because maybe they didn't get to those, those, other than those five people.
No, no, I agree. I think the office hours is a great idea. I think putting a topic on it might help, but, and our other data point is for the school's start time, which you think people are pretty opinionated about, there were five people here.
I know.
And they're all pro for, like, they're all for it. They're like, why would, you know, how fast can we do it? They came because they're passionate for it, like, the people go to PTO who really wanna help our community.
I expect that, I expect a lot more, like, I know people support it, but sometimes the schedules are impactful, but I think times have changed too, like, people have a little more flexibility in their, you know, whether they work from home or whatever the case.
That's what makes it weird, that people don't show up. It actually should be easier for them to show up, right? Like, no, yes?
Yeah, I mean, there's, like, you can't make people want to do that thing.
No, 100%.
Right, like, you're all, right, there's always been, right, a subset of people who are very involved, and they tend to be the same people that you see throughout town doing stuff.
Okay, no, there's, there's, it's a good thing, but, you know, I think we made good, good progress during the year, and again, Michelle, I don't know how many followers you have, but it's going on.
We're trending up, so that's all, right? And engagement is way up, which is also good.
Nobody unfollowed us?
Well, I don't look at that, I just look at the overall number.
Like, once your kid graduates, you might be like, I don't know, like, maybe you need to look at the college stuff now, or whatever they're doing.
Right after graduation, a bunch of, goes right down.
I've not seen that yet.
It'd be correlation.
It'd be kind of funny, though.
Okay, so, we're getting towards the end. So, for the policy section, let me just set the table, and let me check a couple notes. So, we're gonna bring, I'm gonna go just a little bit off-cycle, but just because we're gonna bring Section J in as an informational item, which means it's brought forward, and we're not here to talk about it today. Within J, there is JIE, and that is a replacement that has been brought forward by the federal government. So, but just based on the timing that we're going through this, we, we can bring it right into the J piece. And the other policy that is similar is ACAB. So, JIE, or, yeah, just keep your eye on JIE when you see J, and then ACAB is specifically called out in the, in the packet.
So, what you're saying is if we weren't doing a policy review-
We would be-
This is being mandated by government, so we would be doing this.
Yeah, we would be carving these out.
Right.
And when we get to the end of tonight, I think we're on a, we're pacing on a schedule that it should be one and the same, to bring them in.
Gosh, J is not highlightable.
Excuse me?
Can we guess? Well, J is, J was scanned, it looks like, from a copier, as opposed to printed as PDF, so I can't search it, but, okay, just go to the next one.
Yeah, the-
Pepe, small Pepe.
Yeah, and that was, I think that's the, that is the one area, because J might come, or like, the JSCB may also come across a little different, because it is a replacement in the way, the way it's standing. So, but some of this, we're not, we're not voting anyways, except for, so far. We're also bringing Section I in. We had information on the last meeting, it's now brought forward as the first reading. Is there any comments on Section I? I'm listing here, I don't think too, I didn't print the entire agenda. Okay. And if there are any comments that come up on I during the week, you know, before our next meeting, share them with me and Andrea, and we can at least try to get those in the packet. A lot of the times, it's, you know, typos and things like that. So, okay, so that's where I is. And we're not, so we're not voting on anything, is that right?
Right.
Okay, that's my own fault, not my own fault, my own, I was, I misread it earlier. Okay, so, not, no comment on I. J is brought forward as informational. Scheduling-wise, Andre and I had a call with Jim Hardy from MASC. Was it Wednesday or so? And we just wanted to make sure we're running on pace. Jim actually is gonna be retiring later this summer, so he's been really helpful getting us to where we were. Once in a while, there was a question, and Andre, so far, I don't think I've missed anything.
He's gonna, he's gonna put this thing in the system before he leaves, right?
Right, that's my question.
Yeah, yeah, so it's a, so he's, he, I think it's mid-August. So, the way we are pacing, though, is we've just brought forward Section I, first reading and comment. We would then bring that forward as second reading and potential vote. We're gonna try to do that in front of, at the beginning of the workshop.
For June 20th?
On June 20th. On June 20th, we would also bring J as first reading, if there's comments on J, J and ACAB is first reading, that would be a great time to share them. And then, we would call a special meeting to look at Section J and ACAB and try to vote that, if there's, again, if there's feedback. I'd love to do that before the end of June. It'll probably be a Zoom meeting, just to, just to do that. And then, we would, with the direction that Jim gave us, was we could, at that point, we have all the, we voted on everything in form, and then we could vote to convert the manual from in-form to approved, to approved, and that would then allow Jim and MASC to then convert our manual, because it takes, you know, a month or two.
We could do that in the same meeting that we voted J?
Yes, yeah, he said that's fairly, he, his, you know, we've gone through all the steps. So, so that's kind of the, the process, so I was, I'm not sure if we wanna look at calendars for a minute or two, just to see if we can, like, to be honest, I don't have a strong opinion on if we wanted to have it end of June or early July. The only, my logic on end of June was to then kick off the process where they have the whole manual, and that Jim can do whatever, it just gives him a little more time.
Are we giving Jim more time?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, the week of the twenty-fourth, I don't know what, it's the second full week of everyone being out in Medfield.
But if it's a Zoom, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we, we would do that, so.
As long as it's a Zoom, I'm fine. Yep, that week, same.
Okay. Do you want to try, like, Tuesday? Excuse me?
Yeah.
Tuesday, we might try-
In the evening?
I can do whatever you guys want.
I can't do it during the day, that's all.
Evening would be better for me, too, because, yeah, so parenting, so.
Do you want to call it with six?
I can do either.
Six, or seven?
Six is fine.
Seven's better.
Seven.
Okay.
I just feel like, because my kids need to eat, and then I can ignore them for a period of time.
I'm kind of on the same, I'm on that side as well.
It's hard at like six sometimes.
I know, we're running on, I know we're running on few.
Yeah, sometimes.
So, okay, so let's target a tentative date of June twenty-fifth at seven PM as a remote Zoom meeting. And I think that's everything on policy, if I'm not mistaken. We'll go back to the overall agenda. You have yours here, right? So I think that's it, we had the graduation on, I mean, for, that for informational items, is there any informational items?
No, graduation was lovely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great, great day, nice job, great day.
All-night party was very nice, too. For the time I was there, I thought it was great, I was very impressed.
Did you, you help out?
I did, I served food.
Oh, yeah?
Mm-hmm.
What was your shift?
Like, the eleven or eleven-thirty to like, the two-fifteen, so I was like, in the middle shift. It was actually, it was great to see, because obviously, there's a lot of work that goes into it.
Yeah.
It was great.
That's, good for you, thanks for doing that.
Yeah, I handed out McDonald's hamburgers and cheeseburgers, and replenished Chipotle. It was fun.
What, we decided we, can we talk about the twentieth?
Yes.
What, we decided we're just doing it here, right? And what time does that kick off?
Uh, yeah, that's-
It's like an all-day thing, right? I just want to make sure I block my-
Were you doing half-day or all-day?
Or sorry, but like morning, I just want to block whatever.
Yeah, I think what we were planning was nine AM?
I have nine to two.
We'd like to start at nine, yeah, nine to two, I think would be a reasonable time.
It's just going to be here?
It's going to be in Medfield.
In Medfield.
Yeah, we might, may move to a different.
All right, that's fine, but nine to two. All right, thanks.
Yeah, so that, that's good, that's future agenda items anyways. Future agenda items, strategic plan update, we'd look to do that as, as part of the workshop, which is convenient, like, based, based on what, the workshop, a lot of that last year became, hey, what are some of the key themes?
Right.
That we're thinking about last year, so that, that works out really well. We talked about the policy, policy votes, I don't think there's anything else that we